Oh, we just, I think somebody just joined. Oh, maybe not. Okay, we're streaming live on YouTube. We almost had the second page here. Oh, there we go. She's walking.
I am so sorry. I am so sorry. I am so sorry. I did forget that it was the wrong, I got to one time. It's my fault. Sorry.
Okay, well, very good. You're here. That's the important part. Okay, with that, it is five oh four and I'm going to call the meeting in order. That, ask the city clerk to connect the role, please.
Councilmember Carling.
Here.
Councilmember Monroe.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coomer, I'm sorry.
Still here.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Here.
Mayor Marshon.
Here. Great, excellent thing. And just for the record, just want to correctly, the agenda initially showed that we have two Bob Warners, which I think is quite remarkable. But just to correct it, it's Bob Coomer is on the, the agenda on the roll call. Just, just pick that up.
Well, Bob, enough, right? Then it works for all of us.
Yeah, it's all good. Okay, so at that, ask, so due to the feedback and delay with the meeting platforms, I will be reciting tonight's pledge allegiance. Please mute your microphones and follow along at home. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now we're back. The meeting is being conducted pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act and the recent executive orders issued by the governor to facilitate teleconferencing to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission at public meetings. The city of Livermore has met all of the applicable noticing requirements and the public is welcome to participate in this meeting. I'm going to take a few moments to explain the process that we'll be using this meeting. Tonight, we're using the Zoom meeting platform and YouTube. This allows members of the public to participate by submitting public comment through YouTube or the Zoom question and answer feature. The Zoom and YouTube meeting links are available on the city of Livermore website and on the agenda. While participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be submitted per person, per item. Comments should be no more than 500 words. If you submit multiple comments for a single item, the last comment will be read into the record and remaining comments will be added to the meeting record and will be part of the public record. The public comment period closes at the conclusion of the comments being read into the record. Items received prior to the meeting using email or the Google form on the city's website were provided to the city council and the public as a supplemental packet prior to the meeting and therefore will not be read into the record, but it will be part of the public record. So with that, I will bring it back to the agenda. Bear with me for a moment. Okay, so this is an opportunity for the public to address the city council regarding the workshop items. Ms. City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Mayor, we've received no public comment.
Okay, well, the ones that we did receive are already in the public record, they're in the packet, but we haven't received any since the close of comment period. Okay, very good. With that, I'll bring it back to budget workshop item. This is the proposed fiscal year budget 2019, 2021 financial plan update. Mr. City Manager.
Very good. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I am Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I am pleased to provide you the financial plan update this evening. We together, your staff, have prepared an update to your 2019, 2021 financial plan. The plan contemplates Livermore's short-term economic outlook during these times and provides an overview of citywide revenue and expenditure projections with a focus on the general fund and general fund reserves. The plan update reflects known and anticipated impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic event and the effect on our community. The good news is, is that your city is currently financially healthy and the plan update addresses the various operational challenges presented by the events of this past year. The plan provides a prudent spending plan that maintains current service levels to ensure Livermore's high quality of life. The document acknowledges the financial challenges that Livermore faces in the near and longer term, but also celebrates the prior year's accomplishments and is intended to be a roadmap to build upon the progress we've already made toward realizing the goals that the council adopted for fiscal year 2019 through 2021. Tonight, we're going to provide a presentation in a couple of parts. As soon as my introduction is done, I will introduce Administrative Services Director Douglas Celestio, who is going to lead us through the update of the overall operational plan. While we're going to touch on all of the various pieces of the plan, his bulk of his focus will be on the general fund because that's of course your most flexible spending dollars that you have and also the largest single part of your overall financial plan. When Mr. Alessio has completed that update, I'm going to call on our city engineer Sherry Sheets, who will walk us through your capital improvement program and the updates to that plan, including the items that have already been accomplished so far. This is an update to a two-year financial plan. So at this point, the first year of that plan is a little more than three quarters done and we will have some information on sort of how we are doing year-to-date in the first year of the two-year plan. So it updates the current year that we are currently in. It compares it to the previous year, essentially last fiscal year, to give you a sense of scale. And it also revises the coming year, 2021, as we look out to the, the next 12-month period here. As I noted before, your staff believes this provides a prudent plan that allows us to have flexibility as we move forward. Of course, the budget plan is just that. It is a budget and a plan. It is meant to provide flexibility and provide us with options as we move into these coming months. This is unprecedented territory, both from a public crisis standpoint and of course, from a financial standpoint as well. So we've built in a number of flexibilities into the plan that will allow us to make some of our larger spending decisions as we enter the next year of the plan to put those off until we have a little more information about how the economy is reacting to this crisis. Mr. Alessio is going to touch on essentially what we know so far, as well as what our projections are based on that information that we know so far to give you some context as to why we have suggested the funding adjustments that we have. To start sort of at the very top of the list, we are not proposing to reduce any permanent full-time staff positions in the current spending plan. We do not believe that is necessary or prudent at this particular time. As we move forward, we have made a number of adjustments and we'll be going through and touching on those adjustments as we detail the various areas of the plan. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Administrative Services Director Douglas Celestio to lead us through essentially the first part of the update this evening.
Thanks, Mark, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. This is Douglas Celestio, your Administrative Services Director. As noted by your city manager, we're here tonight to present to you the draft two-year financial plan update. This is a updated spending plan for the remainder of the current fiscal year and revisions to next year's budget, which was originally adopted in June of 2019. And now that we have additional information, we think it's wise to make some adjustments to the spending plan for next year. So this is the cover of your budget book. We thought it was pretty apropos of what's going on and was taken by one of our employees as she was out getting a morning walk. So I thought that was pretty cool.
Mr. Alessio, if I could just break in real quickly here. They've since, just like we're doing an update for our plan, they've updated the, the marquees on the vine. On the left side, it says, I'll be back, the Terminator. And on the right-hand side, it says, just keep swimming, Dory.
I like it. All right, so one of the things that I'd like to do is discuss the foundation for your budget, which are the council goals and priorities. So the council goals and priorities are to establish a comprehensive asset management program, ensuring the community continues to receive vital services through a sustained infrastructure strategy. It is the downtown enhancing the city's vibrancy by completing critical projects downtown, ensuring the right balance of local amenities to support quality of life. It's emergency management and public safety, which is establishing a comprehensive emergency management program, ensuring staff and community readiness and expand the use of technology enhancing public safety. Encourage an innovation-driven economy, supporting revenue-generating businesses, high-quality jobs, entrepreneurs, and unique experience for residents and visitors. And housing, establish a homeless strategy, engage local partners to develop a coordinated response and expand the diversity of affordable housing opportunities. So in addition to those items, we have some operational challenges that, that have come up over the last, since the budget was adopted. We had a cybersecurity incident where the city had a ransomware attack. We did not pay any ransom on the ransomware attack, but it did bring to our attention some needs for some operational changes and investment in our IT infrastructure and operations. The, the budget before you, as Mark pointed out, does not contemplate reducing any staffing and does contemplate adding one FTE citywide, just one new person, and that would be a cybersecurity officer to help move our cybersecurity program further along. Obviously, we have the sheltering in place as a result of the other virus, COVID-19, which seems to have induced the ongoing economic difficulties, which we believe will lead to a longer-term recession. We've been anticipating that recession for some time. You might recall that we were in the longest period of economic expansion in U.S. history. It came to an abrupt end in February as shelter-in-place orders had the dislocating effect on the economy. So for Livermore, as Mark said in the introduction, we've been preparing for a downturn in the economy now for some time. Council adopted reserve policies several years ago. They updated those to increase our reserves. So we're well-positioned to deal with the immediate impacts of COVID-19. Those impacts to us are primarily felt in transient occupancy tax and sales tax. So historical charting of our transient occupancy tax, you can see back in 2002, three with the dot-com bubble breaking, we had a bit of reduction and then you see the, the great recession and nothing in magnitude like what we're seeing happen to our TOT because of COVID-19. You see the severe drop at the end. So we've adjusted our revenue estimates for transient occupancy tax downward by 35% for the current fiscal year and next fiscal year. That equates to about $1.3 million of lost revenue in the current fiscal year and about $1.6 million in lost resources for next fiscal year. You'll see at the tail end of the chart, we have a slight gain in TOT. This is because this is a net change and we have some new hotels that we believe would have been coming on during this time period and will probably open before the end of 2021. That's reflective of that. So although that impact of $2.9 million is pretty severe, it is nothing compared to the impact on our sales tax revenue. So our sales tax revenue, we are reducing our projection by 4.1 million in 1920 and 6.8 million in 2021. This is reflective of our dependence on consumer, general consumer retail. The city has recently diversified its sales tax portfolio, adding in some industrial sales tax producers like Gillig and Toyota Materials Handling and others. We still rely heavily on retail, particularly the outlet mall. We suspect that the impact on the outlet mall, although pretty immediate, will have long-lasting effects because of its dependence on international travel. We also expect next year's reduction in sales tax to be a little bit more painful than this year's as the sales tax numbers come in and we see reduction because of the outlet mall. That will also decrease our percentage of the county pool sales tax. So in all, we're expecting about a 13, excuse me, a $10.9 million loss in sales tax over the two fiscal years. Those are our two revenue sources most impacted immediately by COVID-19. And if you add that up, that is a $13.8 million loss in resources in these two fiscal years. Your budget also programs out the beginning of a recession where we see a softening or a flattening of most other revenues, including charges for services and other taxes such as business license tax. So that is the economic picture that is helping inform our spending plan, our proposed spending plan for the next two years. So as Mark mentioned, we focus on the general fund, but you're adopting a much bigger budget for the whole organization, includes the general fund, enterprise funds, capital project funds, internal service funds, special revenue funds, debt service funds, and a permanent fund. The, the chart will indicate very clearly why we focus so much time on the general fund. It is by far your largest source of providing services to the community. It is also your most flexible. You'll notice that the next grouping of funds in economic strength is the enterprise funds and they make up a fairly significant portion of the city's budget. If you look at the 1920 proposed budget, you will see a rather large bar for the debt service funds. This anomaly has to do with the refinancing of the long-term debt that council approved for us to go forward with at their last council meeting. So there will actually be a large influx of capital, which is then used to retire the existing long-term debt. So you will see this anomaly throughout the budget and it's very clearly indicated here by the $106 million debt service item. So. Right. So the various spending categories citywide are personnel, supplemental personnel, supplies and services, capital outlay, transfers, capital improvement. Now, usually when we're talking just about the general fund, we say that personnel costs, which are the first two layers there, the green and the rust color usually is about 75% of our general fund. These numbers here are citywide numbers. So you'll see that there's a much larger category for supplies and services. That's reflective of the citywide focus of this chart, which includes things like the wholesale purchase of water from Zone 7 shows up in supplies and services. In particular, for 1920, also the refunding of the existing debt shows up as a supply and service. It also shows up in your transfer categories. So you'll see that those two categories look quite bigger in the proposed budget and that's the reason for it. Not surprisingly, transfers don't shrink that much between 1920 and 2021. They will shrink because the, the debt service refunding will be out and completed, but we have a, a pretty significant transfer out in support of storm drain enterprise fund. If you recall, at the beginning of 2018, 19, we started to report stormwater as is, as an enterprise fund so that we could identify and track actual costs to providing stormwater services because we believe that it is an incredible use of resources without an identified revenue source. And we wanted to make sure that all those costs were aggregated in one place so we could understand the impact of, of that to the city's overall budget. All right. So this is general fund reserves over time. So you can see that we adopted a fund balance policy back in 2000, I believe, 11, 12, and started building back our reserves. The first level of reserve here is, was called non-spendable. That's the part of the general fund balance, which is not easily spent. These are things like when the general fund loans, other funds, money. That is then makes up a non-spendable portion of your general fund fund balance. We have the committed reserve balance, which is the blue, the assigned, which is the green. We have an unassigned reserve of one and a half percent, which is the purple. And in 1516, we started an infrastructure reserve, which council directed us to whenever at all possible to fund at a level of $2 million a year. And you can see that's the little puce bar in here that's growing. And then on top is a tan, which is in excess unassigned fund balance. The city has been concerned about an economic downturn for a number of years. We've taken, undertaken several strategies to constrain our spending in anticipation of the downturn. This has to do with limiting the amount of staffing that we've taken on over the time period. And as a result, we've built up quite an impressive fund balance and the excess unassigned piece in the fund balance had been earmarked to jumpstart the downtown capital projects improvements needed down there. And because of COVID-19, some of that excess unassigned will be used to address our revenue shortfalls. So we're really well situated to address the immediate impacts of COVID-19. All right, so the general fund budget to actual for 1920, the first column here is a, is a full-year budget is originally adopted last June. And, and some of the characteristics that are worth noting is that we had a gigantic investment planned in downtown primarily, but in other places where the general fund funds capital proven projects. We thought we would be able to get about almost $16 million of capital projects done this year. So the second column is our actual expenses through March 31st. So understand we're comparing a whole year's budget versus three quarters of year of actual expense. There's nothing here that is extraordinary to me. I look at this and our revenues usually run slightly behind as our two biggest revenue sources are collected by other government agencies and remitted to us afterwards. So the fact that we're at 63% of our revenue, three quarters of the way through the year is pretty normal. This actually doesn't reflect the second large property tax payment we get at the beginning of April. So we're right on target revenue-wise, except for at this point, we would see almost a severe drop in TOT revenue and sales tax moving forward out of here. So this looked pretty normal up until, you know, March 31st. On our operating expenditures, we're where you would expect to be except for CIP. A lot of that had to do with slowing down because of measure P and having to wait until we could develop some projects downtown and also the fact that we've done no construction since spring has started until I think last week it started up again. So this is your general fund budget, the actual by category. So you can see that personnel services were 18 and a half payrolls into the 26-year payroll. And so we're about 71% of the total. We're tracking at about 68.8. So that shows you we have a, a low vacancy rate and the slight savings we're experiencing there is just the lag in time it takes to fill positions as they come open. Our supplemental personnel services, which are other employment-related expenses like pension, healthcare, other things like that, CalPERS, we're right on track. It's 70%. CalPERS now requires the city to pay a, a large piece of its annual contribution at the beginning of the year in much smaller pieces as each payroll occur. Supplies and services, we're only at 43.6% of the budget. A lot of this has to do with the slowdown in downtown up to this point and not getting as, as much progress done. A lot of times also staff holds off on buying some of the supplies and services until we see how the year is playing out. So nothing looks that unusual here. And again, you'll notice the reduced capital improvement spending. All right, so this table basically is highlighting your existing budget versus the, the budget that staff is proposing as, as part of the financial plan update this evening. You'll see that the original plan had called for us to spend about $13.6 million of our reserves. And currently it looks like the, we should finish the year about a half million dollars in the black. And that is reflective of a drop in operating revenue. You'll see that we're, we're expecting operating revenue to drop 3.2 million. You might recall, I said 4.1 million reduction in sales tax and 1.3 in TOT. If you're adding, that's 5.4. So we clearly have had some revenues outperforming our original estimates, then that's primarily interest income. So the city's treasury is doing quite well. We actually expect to earn about a million more dollars on our investments than we had anticipated when we first adopted the budget. So that's mitigating some of the impacts of COVID. The other things here is you'll see that we took and carved out a fairly significant amount of operating expenditures. We took a look and said, wow, with the shelter in place going on and the end of the fiscal year so close upon us and with the impacts of the reduction in resources of TOT and sales tax, we took and really worked hard to reduce our current operating expenditures. We carved out almost $4 million out of the current operating budget. So the other big change here is obviously we're proposing much less get completed in CIP before June 30th. We believe that there will be a little bit more than $5 million completed by June 30th. All right, so 2021. The existing budget is the first column and we thought we would spend an additional three and a half million dollars out of reserves primarily on, on downtown and, and construction projects. So you'll notice the new proposed budget takes a lot of the things we didn't get done this year and pushes it out till next and you'll see the $13 million operating. Uh, till next and you'll see the thirteen uh million dollar um operating. Uh, deficit next year that will chew up a bunch of your fund balance. So uh. That's a result of your operating revenue declining. That's a eight point six million dollars. And again, that is mostly. Uh, sales tax and T O T and a reduction in things like charges for services. And then overall dampening of the economy. Alright, you'll see uh transfers in coming down a little bit. Um, this has uh again, this is a result of uh. What we believe will be less development occurring particularly in downtown. We're expecting a a bit of a transfer in from the downtown revitalization fee fund. To repay the general fund money that it borrowed uh quite some time ago. Uh, but it doesn't look like that will be happening. So we're going to take about a million dollar hit to our transfers in. So you will look and see operating expenditures went up a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Um, and that is uh primarily the result of uh, we had to hold the line. Uh, we weren't making any increases to the budget. We believe uh that we can weather the COVID storm with. Uh, the reserves we have in place and uh the hundred and seventeen thousand dollar increase. Is a reflective of the addition of a cybersecurity officer uh who uh will be funded. Uh, from various places citywide, this would be the general funds uh piece of that. Uh, we you'll see that we have a reduction in transfers out uh that has uh to do with. Uh, refinancing the some of the city's long-term debt and moving some of the transfers out. And that C I P is uh grown slightly, but roughly the same. Alright, so. Just to give you an idea, uh, this is general fund revenues by category stated as percent. So you'll see that last year, property tax and sales tax made up sixty percent of the city's general fund budget. Other taxes added another fifteen uh fourteen percent. That's seventy-four percent of the city's uh operating. Uh, in general fund resources coming from taxes and our reliance on taxes. So uh, you'll see that there's an adjustment here for sales tax going down quite a bit and other taxes staying about the same. Uh, but this is just slight change in our our revenue. Um, in that uh property taxes uh going to emerge once again as our largest revenue source. So. General fund operating expenditures, the city council budget is rather small, the city manager's budget. That is the city attorney budget, administrative services, general services, innovation and economic development, the library. Community development, fire, police and public works. And you know, this is uh just a illustrative of the priorities that the city puts on public safety. Public safety makes up uh for nineteen twenty fiscal year makes up fifty-seven percent of our general fund budget. And in twenty twenty one, it makes up fifty-five point seven percent of the general fund budget is spent directly on police and fire. Alright, so. These are your projected general fund reserves. So you'll notice that we're still. Planning on adding money to the infrastructure reserve uh at the end of nineteen twenty and holding the line in twenty twenty one. You also notice that your excess on assigned shrinks quite a bit. Uh, this is uh so that we can absorb uh what amounts to a thirteen point eight million dollar loss of resources. While still moving forward uh with developing the amenities in the downtown. At the end of the two-year budget cycle, we expect your uh council policy that calls for. Um, operating reserves at thirty percent uh to be fully funded, that uh we will have ten million dollars. Uh, in infrastructure repair and replacement and above and beyond that, this little. Tag of brown appear about two point two million dollars of excess on assigned fund balance. At the end of the budget cycle. Alright, so uh, this is a general fund diagnostic put out uh by uh the. The League of California Cities. Uh, we show this every year as part of uh the budget process. Uh, so there's three ratings. You're either green or yellow or red. Uh, so congratulations. Most of uh our categories are green and none of them are red. So that's fabulous. Uh, we are do of course have a couple areas of caution, uh net operating deficits. Uh, so clearly uh with the reduction in uh resources of thirteen point eight million and a planned. Uh, spending on capital improvement, um, our our indicator number one is showing is yellow. Um, that is okay. Uh, we we believe that uh we'll be able to. Uh, get to a place where we are not at the net operating deficit. In a in a short amount of time. Number four, uh fixed cost and labor costs is also cautionary. Um, I find that this is a interesting part of this diagnostic tool. Uh, we run a really lean general fund. And we don't have a lot of discretionary spending in it. And uh, in order for this uh item number four uh to be green and not yellow would mean uh that we would need. To have twenty-five percent of general fund spending be able to go away anytime we wanted to. And and we're not built like that. Uh, we're we're built with very lean staffing. Um, and so there are aren't a lot of costs that uh we can avoid. So this is yellow and will most likely be yellow for some time. Uh, number six, uh budgetary cons- uh constraints on budgetary discretion. Uh, that in number five are closely tied together. Uh, because uh, excuse me, number four. Uh, because of our fixed and labor costs, we do have constraints on uh budgetary discretion. And number seven and number one are tied together, uh balancing the budget with temporary funds. Uh, that is using your uh excess reserve that is built up. Uh, in order to build those capital projects into uh whether the COVID event. But other than that, uh, this is a really nice scorecard, uh particularly in the face of uh. The the oncoming changes and the impacts uh that uh the pandemic has had on the economy. Alright. So this is the long-term financial plan model. And uh, so in the budget, we actually model out well beyond the budget period. So the budget period goes through fiscal year twenty twenty one. And we budget out or forecast an additional five years. And so what you're seeing is uh, we believe that w- we're going to uh cross back over to a. Uh, place where our incoming uh resources exceed our outgoing um expenditures in in twenty twenty three. Alright. So uh, these are some longer term items to be monitored uh and you know, are are cause for concern, the sheltering. Uh, in place and uh the potential impacts uh it has on the overall economy of the country. And uh, what the recession will end up looking like. It's a little too early to really tell. Uh, but it's just something uh that we'll be monitoring and uh paying close attention to. Item number two is uh, we will be actively negotiating with all four of the cities. Uh, labor groups in twenty twenty one. Uh, so those negotiations uh are going to start. Uh, it basically in December of twenty twenty and kickoff in earnest in January twenty twenty one. In addition to the cities for labor groups, uh, the of. I A F F, which is the labor group representing uh the fire department, uh will also uh. Need to be negotiated towards the end of twenty twenty one. Alright, item number three is pension costs. Uh, with the dislocations happening in the economy and uh weird things in the stock market. Undoubtedly cowpers will be charging us more. Um, so we are expecting pension costs to go up. Uh, the other side of that is our O P E B costs. Those are pension costs too that we have in our own trust. And they did not uh, of course, do as well this year as we would have hoped. And though that is worth monitoring uh for future budgetary flexibility. Item number four are stormwater mandates. So a lot of the transfers out that you may have noticed on the slide. Uh, for next fiscal year have to do with funding stormwater improvements and stormwater operations. Uh, which um, there's a lot of mandates coming and not uh any identified revenue source. Which means your general fund usually ends up uh holding the bag and having to figure out a way to pay for that. And which ties into item number five, which is infrastructure. You know, this is uh the one item we've been wrestling with uh that we're working on solving. And uh, is the only one of your long-term liabilities that we don't fully fund yet. Alright, so next steps are. We would take any direction that you give us tonight and we would incorporate it into the final document. Uh, which will be presented for formal adoption as a consent item on June eighth. So with that, I want to turn it back over to your city manager, Mark Roberts.
Pretty good. Thank you, Mr. Alessio. Again, I'm Mark Roberts, your city manager. And with that, uh, I'm gonna ask Mr. Alessio to unshare his screen and us to start the process of having your city engineer, Sherry Sheets. Share her screen for you um, so that we can start uh the presentation on your capital improvement program. Um, so as we talked discussed earlier, the capital improvement program um is part of your overall budgeting process. Um, the process again, like your operating budget um has a two-year focus. Uh, for funded projects, but looks out over a much longer time horizon. Um, to deal with uh longer term financial needs of your um capital and infrastructure programs. With that, I'm gonna ask uh Sherry to begin our uh capital improvement uh plan update. So Ms. Sheets.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Member of the City Council. Uh, I'm Sherry Sheets, your city engineer. The uh capital improvement program includes uh both existing assets and planned assets. And I am having trouble moving it forward. What's going on here? There we go, sorry. Um, you're uh as a reminder, the current book value of our infrastructure. Net of depreciation is about five hundred and ten million dollars. The full replacement value, however, is three point three billion. That's a combination of two point one billion in non-enterprise uh infrastructure such as streets and buildings. Storm drains and landscaping. And an additional, sorry, and additional um one point two five billion in infrastructure for enterprise programs. Including the wastewater treatment plant, sewers, water, recycled water and the airport. There are several items issues uh impacting the C I P. First and foremost is the COVID nineteen. Uh, program which resulted in a lot of fewer people traveling and therefore our gas tax revenues are projected to be down. As well as uh Doug was telling you that our sales tax, which impacts our measure B and B B also being decreased. Um, in addition to that, we have our regional water quality control board mandates under M R P two. Uh, which added trash capture requirements and green infrastructure requirements to our program. And that is about to be uh updated to M R P three in the next cycle. Uh, our road repair account on on the good side actually had an increase of about one point five million dollars. Uh, for overall mobility enhancements. S B two thirty one, which passed, uh modified the definitions for Prop two eighteen. And we're hoping it may be applicable to storm drain facilities. We're working with the region to identify. Uh, possible ways to move forward for um on that front. And S B six, the eight, which added monies for park facilities. Um, this chart shows you the difference between the original uh two thousand nineteen twenty one C I P update and our. Uh, original program and our updated program. Uh, the updated program uh includes about ninety-one million dollars. Uh, for eighty-six different projects in the next two years. Uh, it includes the adjustments to correct for the revenue losses associated with COVID. And this, as you can see, results in about an eighteen million dollar reduction in overall uh project expenditures. Uh, that is primarily associated with the delay of the I Street Garage. Uh, several developer-driven uh capital project delays. And uh, the deferral of the unfunded mandate for the trash capture phase three devices. Uh, the fiscal year program is uh broken up into several categories. Um, the largest category uh is our downtown when you include it with parks and beautification, which represents about thirty-three percent of our program. Uh, and then transportation, including trails and traffic control and street maintenance, represents twenty-six percent. Followed closely by our wastewater and water utilities at twenty-five percent. This chart shows you our annual need for uh infrastructure rehab and renewal. As well as the amount of expenditure we're planning to do uh over the two-year period. Um, the uh table shows you that the grand total of what we need to be spending is about forty-eight million dollars. Um, while the amount that we're putting in during this two-year program, the average amount per year that we're putting in is about twenty-one million dollars. About forty million of the ninety-one million dollar program was completed this year. Uh, the major key components that we completed were uh the new civic center meeting hall and emergency operations center. As well as the weatherproofing of both the police building and the city hall building. We uh completed the phase one hangar painting out at the airport, which helps extend the life of the hangars. And we also dem- demolished the admin building as well as the old fuel station. Uh, and we uh provided airport runway grooving to enhance the braking capacity of uh the airplanes at the airport. We completed the uh construction of the Dalton Water Tank, which uh both replaced and expanded the capacity out there. Uh, we uh are well underway with the um wastewater treatment plant emergency generator project. And we have uh begun construction on the aeration um tank project down at the uh wastewater treatment plant. With respect to transportation, we obtained a one point three million dollar grant that will allow us to do pre-development for the Vasco Road interchange. Uh, we completed a little over uh eight million dollars in resurfacing uh and street maintenance projects. And we're able as a part of that to implement um about uh fifty-seven thousand centerline feet of bicycle. Uh, facilities uh which comprised about sixteen percent of the total uh program elements that we um completed under that item. Uh, those those ATP projects included separated or buffered bike lanes, one or the other. On First Street, Sixth Street, uh also along Airway Boulevard, East Avenue, Portola, North Canyons, Valacetus, North Livermore. Garaventi Ranch, uh Stanley Boulevard, Vasco Road and Concanon, as well as Jack London. We also were able to include share arrows on uh Kelly, Lad, Lee, Stanford, Pomona, School Street and uh Silver Oaks. A major safety enhancement we were able to complete was the Greenville Road Patterson Pass signal. That was one of our highest accident locations in the city. With respect to the downtown core, we completed Veterans Way, uh Stockman's Park is well under construction. And we completed the design of the I Street parking garage. The ninety-one million dollar capital improvement program includes major investments in all categories. But in three of them, the downtown revitalization and um parks and beautification category. Coupled with transportation and water and wastewater make up eighty-four percent of our total commitment. The capital improvement program is funded by various sources of funding. The largest compromising about forty-four percent is our local and non-local user fees. Uh, those consist of our enterprise funds, airport sewer water user fees. Uh, as well. as well as our franchise, solid waste franchise fees and vehicle impact fees. The non-local user fees consist of our Measure B and BB and gas tax fees. The second-largest component is our development impact fees, at about 25%, and those consist of our stormwater impact fees, our park, AB 1600 Park and Lou fees, our wastewater fees, and our traffic impact fees. And the third major component is our general fund, which comprises about 19% of our program and includes both our facilities rehab fees as well as just direct general fund contributions. And grants make up the other 10%. Our council priorities are all addressed as part of our capital improvement program. The downtown includes parking improvements, street enhancements, and parks themselves. Asset management is dealt with both in street maintenance, building upgrades, and utility rehabilitation. The homeless and affordable housing goals are dealt with through infrastructure for downtown housing, the innovation for economic development with expanded water and wastewater capacity, as well as new streets, and the emergency management system is dealt with with our real-time awareness center, as well as our EOC enhancement. For the 1921 capital improvement project, transportation comes in at $25.7 million. It includes $13 million in our annual street resurfacing slurry seals. It includes a major project for trails, the Iron Horse Trail from Murrieta to our Royal Road, along with a bridge over Murrieta is included, and that is funded primarily with a grant that we received. We have traffic control improvements for about $2.5 million, as well as the Vasco Road Interchange preliminary studies and environmental. Wastewater and potable water, total $22.8 million, and includes the Dalton Tank that we've completed, the Aeration Tank modifications that are underway, and then the water resources occupied building repairs that we're designing, as well as the primary treatment plant improvements, which is our next major investment into the program, as well as the annual sewer replacement program, which is going to replace a failed sewer, sorry, a failed sewer that crosses Railroad Avenue down near the down near the PG&E substation. Our downtown projects are topped, the list with the I Street Garage, which has been delayed, but still is completed in its design and planned to begin in this program. Stockman's Park, which is well underway, Livermoreian Plaza, which should be starting construction in the next three months, the Livermore Village Infrastructure, including things like the Byerly Building and other hazardous materials removal, and the Downtown Streetscape Phase 2, which will be done as a part of the legacy Livermore project on the Old Gross site. Parks and beautification include $8 million in community-wide park facilities. Most of those projects are being implemented by LRBD, and they include the Arroyo Del Valle Trail Bridge, the May Nissen Park renovation, Big Trees Playground, Jane Addams Playground, Pleasure Island Playground renovations, and of course, our very own decorative wall replacements. Public buildings in the airport, total $9.1 million. They include enhancements, and they're mostly safety enhancements, associated with the airport geometry study, the airport runway grooving that we've already installed, and the terminal demolition, as well as the Civic Center Campus weatherproofing improvements, and the new one, which is our chiller plant replacement here at City Hall. Our last category is flood control and public safety. It totals $6.7 million. As we've noted, the storm drain trash capture devices has been proposed to be deferred due to funding constraints. We've added the Granada Channel Repair. We had a flooding event, unexpected flooding event there, and the repair will be a spot repair at this point in time. Hopefully, we can do a complete repair later. Lost to see this desilting is a part of a FEMA grant that we've obtained, and that just gets you the preliminary study to move forward with. Then the permanent repairs for the storm damage, as well as the real-time awareness center and the Automated License Plate Readers Program for our public, finalize our public safety component. That concludes the capital improvement program part of the budget, and staff is available for questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Sheets, for that part. So with that, that was the presentation of your draft budget for your consideration. We will take your direction as the city council on the budget after questions and discussion. After that, we will make the needed revisions to that budget, and we will return with a final budget for your consideration on June 8 for adoption. Of course, like all local municipalities in the state of California, we are required to adopt a budget by the end of June. We do not have options, so we cannot pay our bills if that does not happen. And the City of Livermore has always accomplished that adoption on time. Your revised budget, of course, as you heard, includes cuts and postponements of projects and programs for the remainder of this fiscal year and next fiscal year. It includes reductions across the board in each of the staff departments, but no reductions in permanent staffing levels. We believe it represents a prudent and flexible plan to address those issues that we know of at this point and allows some flexibility for us to adjust the budget as the economic situation continues to develop over the remainder of this calendar year. It leaves you in a position to be able to come back, and if necessary, make adjustments to the overall plan while still providing a high level of service to the overall community. So while this is a lean budget and one that, as you saw, does anticipate essentially spending some of your unallocated reserves, overall, it is a balanced program that allows us to retain our level of service. So with that, your staff is available for any questions and then ready to take your direction on any adjustments that you might want to the draft budget we presented. Honorable Mayor, back to you.
Thank you. I think it's noteworthy to recognize that at last week's Alameda County Mayor's Conference, we heard a report from the League of California Cities, which reported that nine out of 10 cities anticipated laying off staff in California, and that eight out of 10 cities in the state of California anticipated laying off public health or public safety officers, police and fire. So looking at this budget, it truly is remarkable that we were prepared for this, that since the last, the Great Recession, that we have been putting money away in reserves in anticipation of the next recession. So I think it speaks very well of staff and also the leadership of this council to recognize the need to put those reserves in place, because we all saw this day was coming. With that, I see that Vice Mayor Warner has his hand raised, and followed by Councilmember Monroe. Vice Mayor.
Yes, I wanted to start off with saying that what you've done here with the budget is impressive, given the fact that the, you know, the pandemic just hit, and you had a tremendous amount of work to redo. So I want to just congratulate you, appreciate what you've done here. I think it's very comprehensive, as always. But it really is very impressive, given the situation. So I did have a couple of questions that I would like to ask, and start off with Mr. Alessio. You know, you pointed out that the, when we got to the end of this, and when we finally do begin to have some kind of recovery, but the net was like a $2.2 million excess in our our funds there, in the unassigned reserve, I think it was. But you gave estimates for what you think the transit occupancy tax and the sales tax are going to do. But could you put some ranges on your uncertainty around those and compare it with the size of that $2.2 million unassigned excess that might be there? I mean, my own impression is that the uncertainty could easily take out that 2.2, but could you clarify?
Sure. So, you know, obviously, that's a projection and an estimate. And it could be different than the estimate. Sales tax in particular, you know, you saw the changes in TOT were in the realm. I mean, it's a 35% reduction, and we're talking about $1.6 million. It's really the sales tax and the volatility we'll see there, whether there will be international travel resume at any point in next fiscal year, where we're actually having consumer tourism, which supports the outlet law. So yes, you're correct that, you know, if we take a look-and-see approach and things go worse than my projections, that $2 million could dissipate. You are correct.
And well, thank you. I think the way to, other way to characterize it is we still have a little bit of cushion for that uncertainty. And our problem, if the uncertainty is in the other direction, we're not a problem, but in this case, we still have some cushion with what you put together, and I think that gets to what I wanted to say on, I think it was item seven on the budget health diagnostic. You know, points out that the balancing the budget with temporary funds, but really, part of what we're spending there is discretionary. It isn't the budget where we're trying to meet mandated costs. Did I get that right? So even though that health diagnostic is caution, we still have under our control an ability to not have to go as deep as shown there.
Yes, that's correct. There's still the ability to spend less. So there is flexibility built into this budget, and there's the ability for us to make deeper cuts if it's necessary. Correct.
Okay, so again, it's a reasonably cautious budget. Then the last question I had related to this, we noted, I think it was Sheri Sheets who noted that there were a lot of mandated infrastructure requirements and such as, you know, example, the regional water quality. Is there any anticipation that under this pandemic circumstances that some of those obligations might be delayed for cities?
I'll refer that one to Mr. Roberts.
So Vice Mayor, the league, along with the City of Livermore, has requested that the state consider adjusting some of the timeframes on the mandates that they have laid down, most particularly the ones around stormwater, trash capture, green streets, and related items there. Those are very large numbers. So far, the state has not granted our plea on that one. We continue to, continue to ask that question, because obviously, as you know, we are not the only city who is dealing with fairly substantial dollar amounts. It is not universal across the entire state. The Bay Area is a leader in some of these issues, and so while sometimes that's a wonderful thing to be, in this particular case, it does mean a tremendous amount of local resources are being mandated to be used for this without a corresponding funding source. So different parts of the state, this is less of a priority, because their regional boards are less aggressive in some areas. So I think that's leading a little bit to the state having a little bit of difficulty in sort of clarifying what their direction is on there, since there's a variety of different positions across the state. But we're aware of this. We've made the request, and so far, we have not heard a positive answer yet.
But so the bottom line is there's still some small chance that we can get relief there?
I'm always a hopeful person, but that's not what we're planning on.
You know, I just want to make sure you can see that in the plan, you're not. But in, just like the earlier comments I made, trying to look at which way this, if we're, what we're looking at, if it goes different. But this is another positive possibility.
Yes, it's possible, and it's still in the mix. It's not likely, but I think you're right. There's a whole number of variables in this budget, and I think illustrating that some could break toward us and some could break against is appropriate.
So the one, is there any other that, this is the final question. Is there any other that you would, assumption in here, that you would want to point out that could break against us? Or for that matter, for us, but any other significant one that you would want to highlight?
Well, I would like to highlight that there's additional flexibility built into your budget, and that's in your capital program. While we anticipate having several million dollars dedicated to beginning your I Street Garage late in this next budget year, if things go badly during the next six to nine months, that project could be postponed. And that is another, you know, $3 to $4 million of additional cushion that you could buy by pushing that project further into the future. So while that's not included in the plan, it is very specifically built to have a decision point much later in the year to allow us to gather a lot more information. Your Administrative Service Director noted, normally what we do when we have a recession is we, we look backwards and model, you know, one of two or three different options, because recessions come in different sizes and different shapes. This one, we don't have a good model for, so we built more contingencies in to give us more flexibility moving forward.
Okay, Councilmember Monroe, you have a question?
Can I just add to the answer Mark gave? So there's nothing in here as far as incoming resources related to the CARE Act. And on the flip side, there is nothing in here and wasn't even mentioned as a future concern, but quite possibly could one be one if you're talking about things breaking against you. Is the state, typically when they find themselves in a financial bind, they look to local government to help get them out of it. And so although that wasn't listed on a future concerns slide, you know, the discussion was if things broke worse than you thought, that would be a potential concern to the state looking for local government once again to help them out.
Thank you. Councilmember Monroe.
Right, so I also wanted to just express appreciation for the nature of this budget. What, this almost strikes me as being, budget's not quite the right word for what I see here. What I see here is that contingency plan that here's where we were, here's what we know now, and here's how we're thinking about it going forward, so that in the known eventualities and those things that we can not know, maybe, we have a plan going forward. I think this is very, very solid. I had a couple of questions, and I wanted to bring up the questions that were asked of us by constituents. One, the questions by Mr. Dunbar regarding, yeah, I actually appreciated the compliment to the city as a whole. That was very nice. In general, and this seems to be, you know, sort of the ongoing theme, is how do we think about transportation? My sense with this is we're going to continue in the path we're on. Is there any reason to think about this more specifically with regard to any of the particular pieces? So that's one piece. The second one has to do with the ask from the Climate Action Group regarding, wait a minute, because I'm not sure I got this quite right, because I don't know what this is. A fast charger, creating a path for realistic testing of EV. You know, so this is sort of a, can we spend some money on, on something that might ultimately, it sounds like it's, can we spend some money on something that will ultimately save us money? And I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm not sure I understand entirely, but I did want to actually make sure that those questions were answered.
So Councilmember Monroe, we did ultimately review the request there, and one of them ties back to a decision that you've made previously with your solid waste franchise group. At that point, you gave us direction to continue to explore that. We are continuing to do that. We will be working with that provider. We did talk about the timelines for essentially reordering equipment in those items. And at that time, we made the recommendation and council gave the direction that while a portion of the fleet, the bulk of it would be replaced using current technology, that the next phase of replacement would utilize new technology and would begin our transition. Over time, your staff does believe that the technology will become feasible for broad application into the fleet. We think that time is relatively close, but due to the long lead times of the production of the equipment, it was not possible to do the overall fleet at that time. Clearly, a fast charger to service a revised fleet, I think, is part of that mix. And I think a great ability to do that when we do that second phase replacement. And the decision points for that second place replacement will come to us in just a a a year and a half or two years. So even though it's a couple of years out, we believe that will give the marketplace dramatic amount of time that the change is happening so quickly there that we think we'll have feasible vehicles, even if they are a little more expensive. First, starting at the light duty truck level and then moving to the heavy and very heavy duty truck level essentially over the next few years. The second item had to do with whether we are doing business as usual with our transportation program. As a part of your presentation this evening, you received just a snapshot of significant amount of effort that the city, consistent with your transportation plan, is placing on non-motorized transportation. Both improvements in your downtown area and improvements to your overall bike path, bike lane and shared facilities. And that's a fairly dramatic shift over the just the last 36 months. So we did want to highlight that we are doing things different. Your adopted plans continue to push us to do, continue to do things in a different manner. And that will continue under your current budget and your adopted, both your adopted and your proposed capital programs.
And I had one other question, and this is maybe a little sideways, in which case just tell me to go away and come back later. And that is around the T O T situation. I'm just curious, do we have any sense for how that plays out with the ah, shoot, I want to say Airbnb, but it's the more general category and the hotels going forward. I'm assuming it's too early to tell and that may not be our, you know, under our control anyway, but I am curious because it does affect our income.
To clarify the question, is the question, what are our assumptions about ultimately bringing essentially players such as Airbnb essentially into the city program and permitting that? And is that in these numbers?
Just wondering whether, how this is, no, it's it's actually really a question around how we see those particular businesses which make up you know, a fair bit of 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 income going forward in in the coming year. This is why it might be sideways. So.
So I think part part of the issue is is with the individual folks putting their units up for rent. We're not collecting a significant amount of T O T on at the current time. You have given a direction to develop a program in return to to do that. Although, as you know, you've probably heard on the news, those particular providers are being hit, you know, at least as seriously. Case is far more seriously than the traditional hotel industry. So at this point, I think the real answer is it's too early to tell. It'll take a while for those to recover, just like your T O T from your traditional hotels. So we don't have sort of a much of a crystal ball in there. We have taken sort of the gross number as Mr. Alessio noted and and bring it down. We've not done sort of a fine grain analysis down to the different types.
Thank you. And and I appreciate your answering the question. As I said, it's a little, you know, so.
Councilmember Carling.
Yes, thanks. I just wanted to express my thanks to both Doug and Sherry for very complete reports and and shout out to their staff as well because I'm I'm sure they had plenty of help putting that information together. And one thing I noted was the budget health diagnostic. I think since I've been on council, this is the first time I've seen that particular diagnostic where not one of the squares was red. So that was certainly good to see. I'd just like to follow up on Councilmember Monroe's question about some of the email we got today. My thought was waiting to see what the Climate Action Plan has to say, and I think we can use that as a guide moving forward to address both the information we got from Stephen Dunbar and and from Tom Felter as well. So I think that's the approach I think would be very prudent. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I don't have anything to raise my
Your hand, Councilmember Cooper.
I I just, you know, knowing how long it takes to put a budget together. And somewhere mid-process with this pandemic taking over virtually everything we do and able to make those adjustments on the fly to come up with a document like we've just seen. Mr. Alessio, the sheets, your entire staffs, you, you know, we should all stand up and applaud you. And it just, I can't imagine what that takes to do it. I've done it on a much smaller scale. And I just don't, I don't know how you did it. I am so appreciative to see the numbers I saw. I expected a lot worse. I, you know, we knew what some of the impacts would be, but to make those adjustments so deftly. It just has me kind of incredulous here tonight. I just want to mostly, I I have really no questions about it at this point because I think there's too much that's up in the air fiscally for us. So I I think I I'm so pleased to see what we saw tonight and just look forward to things turning around quickly.
Well, and it really is a user-friendly budget. I mean, to, it's very well laid out. The the summaries are very easy to understand. So in addition to that Herculean effort to suddenly rewrite this whole document in the face of a pandemic, it really was a remarkable achievement. So thank you very much to Mr. Alessio and his entire staff. And really, all the department heads that contributed to this. Councilmember Carling, you had your hand up again.
Sorry, I forgot to put it down.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Warner, Vice Mayor Warner.
Yeah, I I agree with Councilmember Cooper and the others, they you really, you guys really do deserve a round of applause. So and if if we were in the council chambers, we were doing it, so I'll I'll do it now. The the other question I had, so it sounded like we were almost wrapping up the discussion on on this budget. And if that's true, I wanted to ask a question about the current thing we're trying to do relative to helping businesses. And to what extent do we need to think about an allocation or? Mr. Roberts, do you have all the authority you need or what's the thought there? Do we need to address that at this point?
So your your staff is still gathering information. The council direction so far has been that as far as direct financial allocations, in other words, giving taxpayer money directly to individuals who have been impacted by the actual crisis for one reason or another. We are not pursuing that strategy. We have been directed to pursue public-private partnerships where the city might partner with a financial institution or other to facilitate loans, cut through red tape, make programs available and more understandable from the federal and state governments to help our small businesses and members of the public throughout the community. And so we are focusing our resources there. In addition, you have directed your staff to design programs and policies to get businesses back up and open and running. And under that, you have given me direction. And I've taken steps such as creating a application process and a review process that does not have a fee or requirement for payment. Waiving fees and payments that would traditionally be required to use the public right-of-way. We are examining essentially objects, traffic barriers, surrounding fencing and other things that are necessary, especially in our downtown area where something's happening on public rights of way to facilitate dining or retail outdoors. We do anticipate that to likely come in at the hundred to thousand to hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We'll have a little more information. I do have adequate authority to do that. But it is good to note that your draft financial plan does not include those numbers in it. So that cushion we talked about before is already a little smaller than than our presentation tonight. But we don't have a a hard number by that. By the time this returns to you in June, we will have a number for our budget, but it will likely be in that particular range. It also does not, as Mr. Alessio noted, include any indication of whether any of those funds or expenditures might be eligible for sharing that cost through essentially programs at the state or federal level. Some of the things we've done absolutely follows squarely in the middle of things that would be reimbursable. At least your staff believes so. FEMA hasn't agreed with us yet. Such as opening the testing site at the fairgrounds where we have contributed a hundred thousand dollars along with Pleasanton and Dublin to do that. But some of them, as far as getting our businesses back open, those may or may not ultimately be eligible for FEMA reimbursement, even though they are related to the actual crisis. But your direction to me is to do what's necessary to get those businesses back up and running, to make sure that the city is not the entity that they are waiting for in order to be able to be open in a safe and productive manner. So I have the authority I need, but it was, I think, very appropriate for you to bring that up and note that that will impact our budget and we will make those adjustments between now and when we bring the budget back on June eight.
So that, thank you. And and bottom line is you've got the authority you need. You don't need any further approval from us. And as you working with Mr. Vanderwater and the others, identify what needs to be done. You can get it done. There will be no delay because of the urgency of the situation. Is that correct summary?
That's correct summary. We will, we will not need further approval to get it done and there will not be a delay. And as we've committed to the businesses on your behalf, because of your direction, the businesses will not be waiting on us to be up and running in a safe and productive manner. And we're already making great progress. We've got essentially seventeen different applications already from downtown, further discussions from a number of other property owners down there as well as applications and questions coming in in from across the city in private property situations. So it's not just downtown that we are focusing on, although that is certainly our our major area of focus since that is so complicated and interrelated. But a lot of private property owners have also wished to explore what they can do to get their tenants back up and running as soon as possible. So. But that will have a budget impact and that'll be reflected when we return in June.
Last thing along those lines is with respect to the timing, would it be reasonable to assume that say by this time next week or possibly earlier, that the first draft plan of what we might do based on all the input from the businesses might be available?
That's, that really depends on, so we have a a a very good idea of essentially the framework for what you directed us to do, which was a base case, which is using our flex zones, sidewalks, plazas, patios and other areas. So I think we're beginning, that's coming into focus, I think, over the next few days. The next step is what more aggressive steps or creative steps we could take, including lane closure, street closure, special events, property owners working with adjacent property owners, come up with creative items, ability to store items and move them into and out of areas on an interim basis. That's sort of the next level. And that is certainly a work in progress and it really depends on sort of how unified the property owners and business owners in an area become and how quickly that happens. In some areas, we appear to be closing in on some ideas. In other areas, it's not so clear. And we want to make sure, first of all, we do no harm. That we don't harm a business by being super creative. We always want to be helpful to everyone and as creative as possible. So I would say over the next week to 10 days, over the next few days, we'll have the base case. And over the week, next week to 10 days, we'll have some of the more creative and expansive items pinned up.
Thank you.
Just a quick question for the the viewers at home. Who would be the best contact of the city when you're talking about the partnerships and the 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 planning and flexibility that we were talking about? Who would be the best, what would be the best department to send people?
So we are asking on things related to outdoor retail, changing your standards for parking, dealing with issues in the downtown, dealing with issues on private property, that folks contact our planning department. There is a team of folks set up to help you with turning that application in and working through our process. It is a no-fee process. And we have people sort of to help you go through the steps there. And it starts off with just a very straightforward application that's available on the website. And if you go there and look, you can find that and then give us a call during business hours. And if you have questions, and once that's turned in, we'll get right back to you, let you know what additional information we need. So so far, the folks who've been participating in the process have been very pleased with it. You know, it it is something we want to make as easy as possible. We want to make sure it's absolutely safe. But we want to make sure that people understand what's asked of them. And then we work cooperatively with them to get that. So planning is the place where you would enter the system. Mr. Spence, do we have them coming into the main number at planning or is there a particular one? I don't have it right in front of me, the the specific phone number or link.
So the main number for planning is nine, six, zero, four, four, five, zero. And and that's a good one to call. That takes you to the to the main response. And if if we're busy, you can leave a message and we'll get back to you as quickly as we can.
So as you've heard, Honorable Mayor, you've heard several different people from Community Development Director Paul Spence to Innovation and Economic Development Director Adam Vanderwater, to Assistant City Engineer Bob Vin, all working on this project as long along with a lot of their staff. And, you know, surprisingly to some people, we're all talking with each other every day, multiple times a day. So no matter where you enter the system, we'll get you to the right place. We'll have the right people taking a look at those things. And we'll get an answer back to you in short order because you have directed us and we understand getting our businesses back up and running is one of our most important jobs that we need to to get done because without that, you know, the financial plan that you've seen tonight does not work if our businesses are not back at work and our community is not able to safely be able to go out and and participate in those businesses.
Very good. Thank you. I believe I saw that there was an Emerson poll that was taken over the weekend that identified that 65% of the public do not feel safe going back out as we used to. So this is why it's going to be so critical that people we we start planning this and that people then eventually feel assured that it is safe to venture out once again. That's going to be incumbent upon the businesses and the city and everybody working together to ensure that people can go back out and they will be safe. So that I certainly appreciate all of your reference. That, I see no further, no more hands. Any further comments, questions? Okay, with that, we're going to adjourn this to a regular city council meeting on June 8th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. And that'll be, looks like another Zoom meeting. So look forward to seeing you all then. Until June 8th, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good night. Thank you.